Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 13th meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectment. If you'll please indulge me for a moment, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, subsection 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. On WCTV Channel 9 for our Comcast Xfinity viewers and on Channel 37 Verizon Fios viewers, we're also streaming live on wctv.org. Meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectment is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656. Enter the ID 851-8751-7301, then press pound and press pound again. Now at the next. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment. By the following steps previously noted, star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All the callers using this feature will be placed in a queue in the order they entered the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, we will post the record of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. And with that, I wish you all a very good evening. I hope everyone is having a very nice summer. Go ahead with the roll call, Mr. Kyra. Mr. De Palma.
President.
Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni.
Yeah.
Great, and good evening to everyone. If you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America, to the public for which it stands, unnational, liberty, God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice.
Thank you very much for that. We have the transmitting of Treasury warrants 52, 52A, 53, 53A, 54, 1, 2, and 2A. Is there a motion to approve?
I think we need to make that motion.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the motion has been made by Mr. Eaton and seconded by Mrs. Omahaoni. All those in favor by roll call, Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Mr. Eaton.
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni.
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is also a yes, it's unanimous. We have approval of two sets of minutes. The first, we'll pick them up individually. I think we'll have some abstentions here, so we'll take up first the meeting minutes of October 15th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Sluggman Kyra, make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second, either a second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Kyra and seconded by Mr. Eaton. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, we'll call for the roll call vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Abstain.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes.
And Mr. Bendel is also a yes. So we have four in favor, no opposed, and one abstaining. And then, secondly, we have the minutes of May 11th from 2020. Is there a motion?
Selectmen, make the motion to approve.
Selectmen Omahaoni will second it.
Thank you both. We have a motion by Mr. Kyra. It's been seconded by Mrs. Omahaoni. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
I will abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is a yes, so we have four in favor, no, none opposed, and one abstaining. Okay, great. We will jump into our appointments. Our first appointment is with Mr. Adam Quinn, who's with us from the Heidi Burger LLC DBA, the Habit Burger Grill, for a request for a common victual license for the property located at 196 Balladville Street. Mr. Quinn, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Bendel.
Thank you for being here with us, and we're excited to hear what you have to say. I know you're here seeking a common victual license, but I think being around dinnertime, we all want to hear what you have to offer for the town.
My background is, some might know, I'm a Dunkin' Donuts franchisee in town, second generation. I've been driving out of Balladville Street area for a long time, and I think that there's a real need for some food use. I have zero creative bones in my body. I understand the franchise model and working well with people, so that was the model I thought was best. I started digging around on this, on this concept, and they just started franchising their California burger chain. They have about 300 stores. They recently got bought by Yum! Brands, a major, especially the largest restaurateur in the world. But I'm just a little guy, and I'm trying to open my first store in an area that I'm comfortable in. And my wife is pregnant with our second boy, and the only way I could talk her into me taking on a new challenge was naming the burger shop after her, so that's why it's Heidi Burgers LLC.
I think as a father of two, that sounds like a smart idea. So, well, welcome, and I'm sure maybe some of the members have questions for you. If that's okay, we'll go around and ask you some questions before we take the vote. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Kyra.
Yeah, we don't have no questions. Does Mr. Hall want to go through the approvals from the various boards?
Sure. Do we have recommendations, Mr. Hall?
Yes, we do. So the Health Director, Shelley Newhouse, recommends approval of the application. We have a recommendation from the Building Inspector, has no issues with the application for the common victual's license, and that's it.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Quinn, when do you, Mr. Quinn, when do you figure you'll be opening up? I know it's difficult probably at this time to, to.
Yeah, we've had it happen easy. If anybody knew that COVID was going to be going on for so long, there'd be different decisions in everyone's role, I'm sure. I actually have the woman that's going to be running this training in New Jersey for 10 weeks right now. She's, she's down there training every day and self-quarantine and being ready for this. So we're shooting to open in mid-September. I'm telling any, any construction man there, September 1, just to try to keep things moving, but I'd be willing to bet mid to late September.
Now, is this a, is this a corner, corner building where you'd have like a drive-through, or is it just you go in?
Yes, sir. So if you're familiar with Balladville Street and 125, this is that new development that's going around the corner of 125 and Balladville Street. So I'd be the end cap, end cap drive-through, what we would call it.
Has there been any discussion regarding seating with the COVID and everything?
I've talked, I've talked to the franchisees over numerous times. Thankfully, they have 300 stores, so we're working on that together. I've already requested and have received the, the six-foot guidelines and the floor walls. I'm a Dunkin' franchisee, Mr. De Palma, so I'm familiar with how to obtain those things.
Understandable, and as long as Shelley is happy with it, I have nothing else. Thank you. Mr. Eaton?
Not much in the way of questions. We just best of luck, sir, and we appreciate certainly continuing to open businesses in Wilmington. Looking forward to trying out the Habit Burger Grill or Heidi Burger, whichever you prefer.
Thank you, sir.
Omahaoni?
I would just welcome to this new venture, Mr. Quinn. I love, I love the idea of another restaurant being in town in that area, too. I think it's great, great to have. I'm glad to hear you're going to have your second son as the mother of two boys and two girls. I would say may all of your children be male. Speaking as a wife, I appreciate the naming of your company, but I would appreciate more probably putting her name on the first million-dollar bank account, so just a thought, just a thought.
It makes me feel similar feedback.
We look forward to trying it out in September.
Thank you very much.
Wish you the best of luck. Absolutely. Mr. Quinn, I echo my colleagues' sentiments and certainly want to thank you for choosing to do your business here in Wilmington. We wish you best of luck. So with that.
I'm sorry, Chairman Bendel, just one quick thing. I was just hoping the board could help me with one small request. I was actually hoping that if, assuming that the common victual's license was granted, and hopefully I'm not making a assumption it should be, that the board could actually restrict my hours. I was hoping that they would tell me that I can't keep the business open past 10:00 PM. I know that road very well. The target isn't open past 10:00. I know my Dunkin' isn't. I don't want to cause undue strain on the, on town services. I know Chief Desmond would, would appreciate it. And just generally, it would make me more comfortable knowing that I'm not, I won't have to be open later than that with my employees and keeping them safe past, you know, that late at night.
I think it's a reasonable request. Mr. Hall, do you have any initial comments? Do you need some time to mull that over with?
I, I think that, that's fine on, on our end.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and with that, we will call for the vote. Does anybody like to make a motion?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Was it seconded by Mr. De Palma?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is also a yes. Mr. Quinn, best of luck. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Look, Adam.
Take care.
I'm gonna need it.
Look.
All right. And with that, we will move ahead. Our second appointment is, we're very pleased to introduce our two newest police officers, Mr. Michael DiLorenzo and Ms. Catherine Goodwin. Good evening to both of you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for being with us, and we see a picture on the screen there as well, with a nice picture there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also want to welcome our Chief of Police, Joe Desmond, is here. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
And Chief, thanks for giving these guys some time to come on with us. We just wanted to welcome them. We know they just graduated from the academy. I think it was last Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. And, and we're really excited to have them on board, and we wanted a chance to introduce them to our community, although it's my understanding we know that both of you grew up here in Wilmington.
That's correct.
Bits of Wilmington High School, so we're very, very proud to have you now on our police force. So we want to welcome you, and if it's okay with you guys, we're going to go around and say some nice things about you and welcome you, all right? So everyone can get to know your faces, and you look really excited.
We are.
Where else would you rather be than on a Board of Select meeting here tonight in the summer? All right, so Chief, we'll start with you. I know you had a really lot of nice things to talk, say about both these individuals we talked earlier.
Yeah, absolutely. And as you noticed from that photo, it was kind of lonely at their graduation. Unfortunately, like a lot of graduates, the spring and summer, they weren't allowed to have, you know, family and friends celebrate a wonderful accomplishment. And both of them truly are, they're products of this town. They both have deep roots here, both went to Wilmington High School. Katie was a lifeguard down at the lake, pretty used her this year, I think. She interned with us at the Police Department. Both Michael and Katie are college graduates. They have bachelor's degrees in criminal justice. So they have quite impressive resumes to join us with, and it is not easy going to police academy and, you know, both physically and mentally, and then to have interrupted by a pandemic makes it even worse. They actually suspended the academy for a few weeks, actually probably more than that. Then I think during Phase 2, they were allowed to reopen the academy and finish up their studies. So we are very excited to have them here. You know, I've been, a few times in the past few weeks, people have said to me, "Chief, who would possibly want to be a police officer right now during everything that's going on?" Well, these two are among the finest, and again, we look forward to both of them starting their careers in this community that they obviously want to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, and we should mention that they, they should be, I know they're very lucky to have great leadership under you and Deputy Chief Pooper as well, so. Thank you, thank you to both of you. We'll go around and just say hello, if we could. Start with Mr. Kyra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Goodwin and Mr. DiLorenzo. Congratulations and welcome to one of the finest departments in Massachusetts, and I sincerely mean that. Great group of individuals that you're joining, and it's nice to see that two individuals who grew up in Wilmington, staying in Wilmington and working with the citizens of Wilmington, and just wonderful to, to see that full cycle of growing up and coming, coming back here to, to begin your service and hopefully that it would be a long and prosperous one as well. So just wish you much luck and success, and you've joined a fine force in the Wilmington Police Department.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra.
Yes, congratulations. I wish you the best. Always remember, never take the job home with you. And just listen to your chief. You're lucky to be on a real good police department with a lot of pride and dignity. Good luck and enjoy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Palma. Mr. Eaton?
Officer Goodwin and DiLorenzo, congratulations. This is really just the beginning, but there we, as has been said, we have a lot of very good police officers have a lot of good experience that you can learn from. So I would be hard-pressed to find two individuals in town that I have more respect for than Chief Desmond and Deputy Chief Pooper. So do as much as you can. You are joining a very good police department, and thank you very much for your willingness to serve and protect the residents of them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Mrs. Omahaoni?
Yeah, sorry. This is what happens when you light firecrackers in town. The struggle is real. I'm so sorry, but it's July, and this is, this is my life, is the dogs are on top of me whenever they hear a noise, so I'm sorry. But Officers DiLorenzo and Officer Goodwin, welcome. I echo what my colleagues have said. Hopefully, you already realize, or you will come to realize, that you are on one of the finest forces in Massachusetts. We couldn't be prouder of both our police and fire departments here. I hope that you feel our support whenever you need it, that you know that we're here for you. It is, as Chief Desmond said, it's kind of a difficult time to be choosing the profession that you've chosen, but we want you to know that we're here to support you. And we're here to make sure that you keep us safe and you keep yourself safe, so please don't make this the last time that we see you. Hopefully, it will always be for good reasons, but know that, that we're here to support you however we can, and always go to your chief with anything that you need because he's, him and Deputy Chief Pooper are just wonderful assets to our town, and you guys are wonderful assets to our town, too. So thank you for, for making the decision to stay in Wilmington. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Omahaoni. Mr. Hall, I know these two are probably waiting on their very first paycheck. I mean, is there anything you want to say?
Well, you know, it's interesting. You truly realize how old you are when, when you can remember back. In Katie's case, I remember her as a very young girl attending the church that I attend here in Wilmington, and it's just amazing to see her now as one of the finest in the town here in terms of the Police Department. And as Selectman Kyra said, I think it is incredibly valuable that we have both Katie and Michael coming from town, knowing the town. In many respects, I'm suspecting you're going to know it in many other respects, too, but the enthusiasm that's evident on your face, I think, is, speaks volumes, and I wish you both the very best and be safe.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So I would thank you all. I would echo your comments, and I hope all residents will join us in welcoming both of you in your new capacity, not, not two towns, obviously, having lived here, but in your new capacity, we'll embrace you, and like everyone said, you're joining a very fine department. Keep in mind that we have a couple chiefs who grew up in Wilmington as well, so someday, I'll be long gone. My colleagues will be here, but you guys could be the chief, who knows, someday. So we have a very healthy and long career, and please be safe. We recognize that it's a challenging time to be a police officer, but again, we couldn't be prouder of the Police Department. We have, and we're very proud of both of you.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. Me and Michael are both very excited to be on the team, and we look forward to bringing our smiles to make a difference in the community one day, one person at a time. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you for that. We really appreciate having you on. We look forward to seeing you around town.
Thank you very much.
And Chief, thank you for being with us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And good evening to all three of you.
Good evening.
Okay, so we're going to move on to our next appointment, which is with Shelley Newhouse, a Health Director. And well, I believe Bill Cavanagh, a Fire Chief, may be on the line. If not, he will be shortly, and they're going to give us tonight's update on the COVID-19 situation. So Shelley, good evening. We'll start with you.
Hi, everybody. It's been kind of a little bit of a roller coaster the past couple weeks. We had really great zero numbers, went up a little bit. Now we're back down a little bit, which is a good thing. It's been really, really busy reopening the town. It's been just trying to make sure everyone is in compliance. There's lots of questions, lots of questions that we still don't know answers to. Lots of scenarios that get played out all the time. It's still so important for people to social distance and wear masks and, and think about what they're doing and where they're going, because I think that's why I had a little spike in cases. I had some people that went away on a trip and weren't really thinking about it, and then they became positive, so, which kind of escalated and made more people positive. So we're back down again, which is a good thing, and we'll just hopefully keep moving in the right direction.
Great, and thank you. I think you actually put out an update this morning, too. You had us at five active positives and two in quarantine, so that's where we are right now, just in case people missed that, but.
Yes.
For those who don't know, we're still continuing to put out that update via social media and the website, so we appreciate you doing that. I know people are eager to, to see those numbers and keep, keep a close eye on it. Chief Cavanagh, can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you.
It's always a pleasure, Chief.
I, nowhere else, I'd rather spend a Monday night with you.
I doubt that one minute. Chief, is there anything you want to add in terms of an update here?
Shelley really has it covered on, as far as the patient end of it, and from the public safety end of it, and I know if Chief Desmond was still with us, he would agree with me that it's gone basically back to business as usual. We are still seeing some COVID-related calls. We are seeing some COVID transports out of some of the facilities of Viniacare, because again, they are like a step-down unit. They're few and far between. They're nowhere near where we were in April and May. So I would say right now, we're actually, we're pushing forward. We're doing pretty well. George Hooper has done a great job setting up all of the office spaces in conjunction with Shelley and Kerry, our Assistant Town Manager, making sure that everybody is set up and they return, have returned to work. I know Jeff gave that update last, last meeting. And, you know, there's either partition setup or alternative office spaces, so that we're getting, getting everyone back to a quasi-normal schedule.
Great, thank you, Chief. We'll go around to see if anybody has any questions or comments. We'll starting with Mr. Kyra.
I'd like to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, no question, just a comment of thanks, and greatly appreciated, as we've said before, on what the both of you do in your departments. Just top-notch, and the town of Wilmington could not have made it through without the both of you and, and the other first responders in Wilmington, as well as the, and I consider them first responders as well, DPW, the Town Hall, and just all the workers, but certainly the work that you've done since March. And I'm sure it's not, unfortunately, I'm sure it's not going to be over soon with the fall and winter coming, but we're, we're very lucky and fortunate to have both of you in the positions you are for the town of Wilmington and the residents of this town, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Mr. De Palma?
I just want to congratulate you. Seeing what's going on with budding towns and other towns in the state, see how they're handling everything and the way you're handling it with such professionalism, and just thought, it was, it's amazing. Having had to use the Wilmington Fire Department back in March for a situation, I will be able to attest that there is no one better. I'm here today because of you, and I thank you. Shelley, I've watched you work, not knowing you yet. I hope to meet you soon. The professionalism that you, you show and the compassion you have is just absolutely amazing for Wilmington. And the residents of Wilmington should be so proud of the, of the whole department, everyone in, in the town. I just want to thank you very much for caring about the residents.
Very well said. Thank you, Mr. De Palma. Mr. Eaton?
I, not much that has not even said, but both Chief Cavanagh and Ms. Newhouse, it's certainly, it's not over yet, and I do appreciate the continued diligence that both of you and your respective departments have shown, and I trust they'll continue to show. Like Mr. De Palma alluded to, I've been trying to follow some of our, the other communities in our area, and I know Woburn just last week reported 241 active cases. That's just active. They had 627 punitive cases. And I, my heart goes out to them and everyone in town that's struggling with this, but I think Ms. Newhouse, your leadership over the past few months has not gone unnoticed, and Chief Cavanagh, you and your departments, we are very good hands. My very deep gratitude for both of you and your respective departments and the work that you two have done, so thank you.
Mrs. Omahaoni?
All right, so I echo everyone's thanks. As usual, you guys continue to amaze me with what you're having to deal with on a daily basis. And, you know, I was, I was actually just saying to someone today, I've kind of had to absent myself from social media because I, it creates a lot of confusion, and I think it creates a lot of anxiety about kind of what's going on in the country with different spikes and what that could mean for us down the road. So I guess kind of a few questions that I have, because I'm, I'm confused about how the phasing is, is being applied in different areas, and I, I think it would be great, I feel like, you know, we hear that we've hit a certain phase and we can eat inside a restaurant, and all of a sudden, everyone assumes this is over and we're not wearing masks anymore, and we, you know, social distancing is kind of a joke. So I guess my first question is, as we kind of continue in this phasing process, how is that information being communicated? And how are those, how, what's the enforcement like for that?
It's really been, well, so we're in Phase 3 right now, and a lot of it gets out, it's all social media and the news. That's how it's mostly getting out. And you'd be surprised at the people that are in Phase 3, like the sports teams and the clubs and things like that, they are waiting with bated breath for Phase 3 to open. We are in constant contact with everyone all the time. Have you heard anything, Shelley? Have you heard anything? What's going on? I mean, I just had some people I met this morning and gave them some masks for some skills and drills for basketball that's going to happen. All the gyms, they've been called, you know, we've been in, I've been in contact with the gyms last week. Everyone just getting prepared. So all the businesses that can be open in Phase 3, they know it, so then they call and they have to have a plan, make sure that their plan is current and correct. And I just work with each and every one of them to try to get this to go smoothly for them, and there'll be bumps in the road, and there's always going to be people that, someone makes a mistake or someone's not doing the right thing at one time or another, but it's mostly, you know, it's learning. It's a lot for these people, like a hairdresser to wear a mask all day long, and I get it, and, you know. you know, there's always going to be times where they need a break. And that's okay. And it's just they want, you know, we get, I get emails every day about businesses that are, you know, the bigger businesses that aren't in compliance with social distancing in their workspaces. And most of the time, I just talk to the managers, visit the site. And you know, they've got 200 employees in our heavy industrial areas that they're trying to manage. And it's difficult for them as well. But we're, we're trudging along and we're doing it. No one, I have not encountered anyone that's been in non-compliance because they want to be or because they don't believe that this is real. It's, you know, everyone's really doing the best that they can. You know, and I'm just pretty real with them. Like, I just tell them, I know it stinks. I mean, I don't want to wear a mask either. But sometimes they jump out of my car and I start walking to the store or something, and I forget. And I gotta turn around and go back and get my little ornaments that I call it on, hanging on my rearview mirror, and put my mask on and go in. But it's, I think things, I hope things won't change in the fall. But with cold and flu season typically done in the fall, it's, you just don't know. And I'm working with the schools right now to try to help them with their reopening plan, which is a humongous endeavor for them. So, that hopefully will just keep progressing along.
And when, just a couple of, I'm sorry, because this is, I honestly, I'm relying on, on what you and Chief Cavanaugh tell us more than, than anything. I'm trying to rely on what you guys are telling us versus kind of the, the fire, you know, that happened on social media. When does Phase Four, what, what does that look like to get to Phase Four?
Phase Four is really all high-risk activities. And that would be August, in August, probably. Looking at bars, congregation of people for longer periods of time, you know, sports with spectators, where people are just congregating, not just going out for a quick bite to eat and then leaving, but really trying to just socialize and congregate. And the plan is, is from what I've heard is August, but we just keep, we have to have these downward trends. If you notice, all the other states, they all are spiked up. And I think we're a little behind, and I hope that we never catch up to them. That would be nice. I'm hoping that Massachusetts hit our high already. And will continue to go on the decline. But you just, you just don't know. And the only way to know is with these openings. You know, the gyms are opening this week. Gyms are tough. I feel like gyms are a Petri dish of germs. It's, it's a tough environment to be in. People really have to practice good cleaning and sanitizing, not both on the customer end and the gym end. And you know, what's going to happen in two weeks, over two, three weeks after these gyms are open? I'd like to just look in for the numbers. And more of these sports-type camps have opened, with just more people gathering together. And we'll see what happens in all of Massachusetts.
Well, and that's kind of my last question is, I know, you know, it must be especially difficult for you right now, because you are the town of Wilmington's, you know, Board of Health Director, and you have to, you're trying to do the best you can to apply the state guidelines to our town. And surrounding towns might be doing it differently. And one of the things that kind of I was surprised to hear was a friend who has a fitness center, not in Wilmington, wasn't able to get guidance from her Board of Health about if it was a class. So, if it wasn't a physical fitness class, but it was more like an educational, like nutritional class, did that mean it was only six feet distance versus the 14-foot distance recommendations? Couldn't get a straight answer from her Board of Health or really from a state agency. And I think, you know, I guess my, my ultimate question in bringing this example up is, how do you kind of try to keep it as consistent as you can? And how, if, if business owners are struggling with, with things like that, with if I'm only going to be doing, you know, if, if I have a fitness-type business, so that, you know, Phase Three applies to me, but I'm only going to be doing like educational versus, you know, physical fitness activities, how, how do they get, how do they get answers to those types of questions as to the spacing requirements? Do they commit something in writing to their Board of Health? Is it something that you're?
They can just call me.
Okay.
It's just, yeah, it's, I'm all day long on, you know, my phone. I tell you, I'm not worked. I work all the time. It's just, and I don't want to, you know, I don't answer questions just between 8:30 and 4:30. So, you know, I was on the phone July 4th with a business in town that had called me that was worried about a potential case that they had and what they should do. And they were so upset that they called me, you know, they weren't sure. And I said, it's fine. It's, I'd rather with stuff, it just takes a little bit, a little bit. If I have to research it, I tell them to wait, and I'll call them back, and I try to find the answer, the correct answer for them on guidance. And you know, a lot of it is we don't know the answer, and the state doesn't even know the answer. And we have these twice-weekly calls that all these random questions come up, that the scenario is just like the one you presented. And we ask, and it's kind of a group effort. And we try to get brainstorm a little bit and say, all right, this is the way it's going to be. And a lot of times, it's the guidance is coming, the guidance is coming. But to get stuff in writing is tough. It's, a lot of it is just what, what we say goes. And but most people have been pretty good. I haven't had too many questions where I'm like, I don't know, I gotta get back to you. But it just takes a little bit
Thank you.
to get the answers.
Yeah. Sorry for all those random questions.
No, it's fine. I get them all day. It's okay.
Things reopen. I just find it really interesting that, you know, you hear five different versions of the same rule, and you're not sure which is the accurate one. And you know, I don't want and I don't want to be the social distancing and mask police, but I feel like that's been my rule, at least in my family, is we don't have a vaccine. We don't, you know, the numbers are down. They have to stay down by us continuing to social distance and wear our masks. And I feel like the more that the world is opening up, and you know, you were saying about vacationers, and that's one of the reasons I kind of took myself off of social media is I'm amazed at how many people are kind of going away for weekends out of state and coming back and acting like it was no big deal. And I'm terrified that, you know, is that going to cause the spike?
It could. It's just, you know, I try to remind people to, like, I'm just one person, and I'll, I'll get back to you. Tracy, that Public Health Nurse, is awesome. You know, but she's doing all the kind of backend medical stuff. I don't want to bog her down with reopening stuff. So, I kind of do all that, and she does the patient end of it. And Kim and Kelly in our office are just so good at phone calls and calming people down. And it's, it's a big team effort. But we're getting, we get there every day. Some days are crazy, like literally non-stop. Just, but you can't get any other work done. And then I try to tell people I have a whole nother job, not just COVID-related, that I have to do, too.
Yeah. Well, thank, thank you for all that you guys are doing.
Thank you. Very good questions. Shelley, one question that came up to me from a resident the other day. I think I know the answer, but I just want to confirm. The numbers you put out recently, including today, those do not include the nursing homes. You're still not doing that?
Correct.
Just wanted to confirm that publicly. Thank you. And Chief Cavanaugh, just unrelated, but I can't resist asking. We're really excited to see that new fire truck any day now, right? Coming weeks?
Yep. So, actually, I talked to our rep today, and it was supposed to actually be inspected by Bulldog, which is our dealership, if you will. But they had another one they inspected. So, they're going to inspect it tomorrow. It should be up here Friday, but potentially Monday at the latest. It'll go into Hawkington. It'll need to get finished lettering, some mounting brackets, and we should be seeing that truck hopefully by the end of the month.
Great. We look forward to it. I appreciate you putting out some photos of teasing us. It looks really sharp. So, we look forward to that. Thank you. And then lastly, I just want to close this conversation. I hope everybody had an opportunity to read this wonderful letter to the editor that was submitted. I, I read it on the Wilmington Apple. Maybe you have seen it, and it was from a a very, very bright sixth grader in town. Ms. Taylor Hurst put a letter to the editor reminding folks to please properly dispose of your PPE. And she goes on to write that she, her and her family have been finding some masks and gloves on the, on the side of the road, and they've been picking them up. So, we appreciate her. I want to give her a shout out. Very impressive young lady. And thank you. We all need that reminder to make sure we safely dispose of our PPE. So, I thought that was fitting that, if you haven't seen that letter, go on, head over and take a look at it. Very impressive letter from that, that young person. So, thank you. But thank you to both of you for all your work. And we look forward to hearing from you again soon. And please be safe, and we, again, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our next appointment, which is with our State Representative, David Robertson. And he also has on the line his worthy aide, Ms. Nelson, who I believe is with us. And we're here to talk about Route 38 lane configuration at Clark Street. Representative, good evening.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. And appreciate you introducing Ms. Nelson. Ms. Nelson's actually, she's interning with us for the summer. She's been giving us a hand on this project here. And she's actually, she's going her junior year at Wilmington High. And I have no doubt, one day, she'll either have my seat or one of yours. She's a very, very active young woman here. So, she's helping out by taking a bit of notes for us tonight. So, in the interest of time, and to keep it short, the reason I wanted to approach you this evening was to discuss your support of requesting MassDOT to do a traffic study at the Clark and Main Street intersection. As you all know, Burlington up to the town line is being redesigned. And in the meantime, Miriam, myself, and a few folks from around the community, were discussing sort of eighty quick addresses to the Main Street corridor that would relieve traffic while we line up the next potential DOT project to fix Main Street. And we're looking at mile markers thirteen to thirteen point one. Now, if you're a local, you'll know that much better as the Dunkin' Donuts by the Wilmington House of Pizza up to Enterprise Rent-A-Car. You'll notice as you drive south, so if you take the left out of Market Basket and head towards the train station, right as we approach Clark Street, the lanes collapse from two to one. And then after passing the Dunkin' Donuts and clearing the intersection, we go back to two. So, after speaking with Mr. Hall and the Town Engineer, Paul Aluni, we were going to pen a letter to MassDOT, asking them to consider, when you're traveling southbound, to instead maintain two travel lanes through the entire direction, excuse me, through the entire segment of that piece of Route 38. The idea is, is that south, as we travel south, that light would become a left turn slash straight and adjacent to the straight lane. And then north would sit and wait, and then the lights would change and allow the other way. The MassDOT study obviously is pretty run-of-the-mill. According to Chief Desmond, there's been about ten motor vehicle accidents that there in three years. It's a pretty low-risk intersection. And we can just ask MassDOT to consider maybe doubling the volume, provided it doesn't decrease public safety as we go through. So, so looking for, see if the board had any questions or would like to join us on support in that letter.
Thank you, Representative. Mr. Hall, do you want to help frame this a little bit better for us? And we can turn to the board to see if they have any questions? You have anything you want to add?
Yes, I, I did speak with Paul Aluni, the Town Engineer. And as the representative noted, noted, he also spoke with Paul. Paul put together some comments that I'll just read into the record. Department of Public Works Engineering Division has performed a cursory review of the existing pavement markings along Main Street in the vicinity of the Clark Street intersection. Clark Street and the driveway for number 299 Main Street intersect Main Street to form a four-legged, signalized intersection under the jurisdiction of the Mass Department of Transportation. Main Street is classified as an urban principal artery highway under Mass DOT jurisdiction, and the, and Clark Street is classified as a local roadway. The Main Street northbound approach consists of two general-purpose lanes, whereas Main Street southbound approach consists of a exclusive left-turn lane and a shared through-right-turn lane. A lane reduction is marked by crosshatching in advance of the dedicated left-hand turn lane. Also, a four-bulb signal head dedicated to Clark Street turning movement from Main Street exists at the intersection. The purpose of the crosshatched lane reduction is to minimize driver frustration and confusion by merging through, through traffic into the appropriate lane in advance of the dedicated left-turn lane. The inclusion of a lane reduction is based upon engineering judgment. After careful evaluation of traffic volume, patterns, and safety, we recommend that prior to any endorsement, a traffic study be conducted by MassDOT for the board's review to see if any changes are warranted at this location. So, as the representative said, I think it would be definitely appropriate to have MassDOT take a look at this. I guess just from a layperson's standpoint, one of the, one of the things that I think really needs to be looked at is the prospect of, if you have the strict full lanes going right through, and if you're heading south on Main Street, for example, approaching Clark Street, and you're in the far-left lane, and then you get to that intersection, and there's a red light, and you realize that you don't want to take the left onto Main Street, onto Clark Street, but you want to continue on Main Street, that could create some jockeying as the light turns green to continue south. So, that's, you know, one thing that I think needs to be looked at from Mass DOT's standpoint. But I think it's worth at least requesting that they reevaluate the configuration.
Mr. Chair, if I might add something?
Please do.
So, again, I apologize, just to be clear. So, as Mr. Hall points out, the two lanes collapse to a one-straight-through and a left-turn-only lane. And again, this letter would ask not just for the two lanes north of Clark Street, but for the two lanes to also continue south. So, if we took the left out and we sat in that full proposed left-turn lane, which eventually would be a left or straight, we would re-signal the lights, so that all of the Main Street southbound traffic would be able to flow through. And you would essentially, whether in the left or right-turn lane, would be able to drive straight. So, again, I apologize if, if it's a little difficult to explain over the phone. But in theory, if MassDOT says this is a good idea, and we agree, our thought process would be the right lane, you cannot go straight through. In the left-turn lane, you'd be able to go straight through or take a left with protected arrow. So, we would have to stop the northbound Route 38 traffic for the signalization. But the idea, again, would be during rush hour, we could flow it at double the pace with protected left turn south, halt south, and then let north go with the double lane there.
Okay, great. Thank you, Representative. We might have some questions from folks. So, if you'll hang on the line, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll go down the line and start with Mr. Kyra.
Yeah, Mr. Mendel, I, I would like to see more, more of this, rather than just on the phone and, and the letter that I got from Paul Aluni. I appreciate what he put together. And I think what he put together was just what we have now, right? And, and I would agree with Mr. Hall that having that lane coming out of Market Basket merge into one and then open up into two with the dedicated left lane makes sense, because you're not going to cause the frustration of people who want to go straight, getting caught trying to go left. It seems to be working fine now. But my, my concern, too, is who is in charge of the lights on that roadway? Is it MassDOT that's in charge of the lights, or is it the town?
That, I believe, and Mr. Hall can confirm, would be a MassDOT signal, as they have ownership of that road. Is that correct, Mr. Hall? Or is that one of the odd ones? I know every once in a while, there's an exception.
Well, I, I would defer to Paul Aluni, who's on, but I believe it is state-controlled. Is that correct, Paul?
Right.
That's correct. Yeah, the whole intersection is owned and operated by Mass DOT, including
Is, is that include all the lights all along that, that strip? The reason why I'm asking is because I, I've mentioned this three years ago, two years ago, a year ago. And, and as I drove that strip again down a Market Basket, and where Savers and Market Basket is, there's a set of lights there. And the, as you're driving towards Tuxbury, the, the arrow doesn't work. So, people are taking a risk in trying to take a left into the Savers Park. So people are taking a risk in trying to take a left into the Savers parking lot. Uh, it it's never seemed to work and and I don't know why, but you try to take a left there and you try to look over the cars that are taking a left into Market Basket. And cars are zipping by and I'm surprised there's not more accidents and and for the life of me. I can't understand why those traffic signals can't be fixed. It it has, yeah, again, I'm going to ask for someone to look at it. To see that left signal light going into Savers can be fixed. You know?
I'm making it over right now.
I'm not so con- so concerned about, you know, uh, about the the lane here. But I I'm just su- surprised there's not more accidents over there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Uh, so Mr. Robertson, I know you've noticed uh, you noted there that you're taking notes on that. We appreciate it if you could uh, perhaps get back to us uh, yeah, on those questions, Mr. Kyra had.
Absolutely. Yep, I have it all written down right here.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. De Palma?
Yes, the uh, to start out with the issue by uh, Savers is that the turn signal light is a very quick light. Uh, it does work, but it's, if you're lucky, if you can get two cars uh, through on a cycle. As far as Clark Street's concerned, I would support it. Uh, it is a very aggravating intersection. Where you do go from two to one and then back up to two. Uh, there's always competition there that someone wants to decides they don't want to take the left. And then they're going to speed ahead of you or try to speed ahead of you as you're going down on the right. I think it's a uh, it's a good idea. Uh, and I believe it could resolve an issue up there of uh, congestion congestion, also including that uh, people are pulling in and out of Dunkin' Donuts all the time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just interject? Um, I had, Gary, I haven't seen that light working in quite a long time. Maybe I'm just. Missing it, but I drove down there over the weekend and it still doesn't work, but maybe it does. I don't know, but it it needs to be looked at. What's aggravating, what's aggravating to me if we're going to talk about lights and I know what we're getting out of uh, out of hand here is that is the lights at Wildwood. Where you allow where Nichols is, where you stop at that light and you let two cars out before it turns. As it backs up uh, down to the cemetery. That's one of the lights we should look at to allow people not to get frustrated. Uh, on Wildwood Street to try to get out more than two cars at a time.
And and uh, not to, pardon me for speaking out of turn, Mr. Chair, but I I agree. I noticed a a fair amount of people taking a right on red, which is disallowed there. And sometimes trips the cycle up even more and compounds it. And I think Mr. Kyra was was it was very astute that I I I have noticed and I don't know if it's folks avoiding Main Street or other ways, but that intersection has degraded again. I agree with him.
We uh, can take a look at that. We've had Green International look at that uh, previously. I think I and Paul, I don't know if you have any information on this specifically. But uh, I think the uh, the reason for the short cycle there is because uh, uh, Middlesex is deemed to be the major thoroughfare there. And the intent uh, uh, is to try to get as much traffic through on the Middlesex legs. Um, which ultimately leads to uh, shorter release time on Wildwood.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Uh, it's just a, it's a balancing act. Balance out queuing on the uh, major approaches in the intersection.
I'm, yeah, I understand. Uh, you know, there's only so much you can do, but.
We did take a second look at it. Um, I want to say it was last September or August. Um, where we we reevaluated it based on some um, feedback we were getting from the community. Um, and we we came up with basically the same solution. Um, because every time we tried to make an adjustment, there was just a detrimental effect on the other side. So it was this.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Eaton?
Uh, yeah, just to first address what's in front of us. I I'm not opposed to a traffic study um, on this intersection, but uh. I dovetailing on what my colleagues have said, of the four lights between Clark Street and Richmond. I think this is probably the third biggest problem. Uh, I think Richmond Street one is probably the. Uh, I think the accidents there are consistently pretty high and then the Savers that the one is your. Uh. Have a corner where CBS is, I I think would be right behind that, but. The Clark Street one, yeah, I have no, no objection to it. There'd be a traffic study to get DOT's recommendation of what should be done there. Uh, but yeah, I. Just in that short script, I I think this would be the third priority that would be the the top one.
All right. And Mrs. Omahoney?
Yeah, so I was happy to see this. Um, and happy to hear that Rep. Robertson was looking into this more. Because I have to say, as as a mother who is now trying to teach two children how to drive. Um, that stretch of road as well as Cambridge Street and Burlington are like my biggest um, fears for my kids. Cause Cambridge Street and Burlington is is one lane, but it's been treated as two lanes my whole life. Um, and that stretch, you know, every time people are on the left side crossing over the yellow. You know, the yellow lines, those ha- the hashtag lines are the crosshatch lines and then veering back into the right. Um, so I definitely think it's great. I I would like to see if we could expand the study to kind of from. The, you know, that that the intersection by Rocco's down to um. That intersection, because I do agree that it's kind of one of three in that area that have similar concerns. Um, so I don't know if there's a way that we could expand it beyond just that one intersection for that kind of half a mile strip. Um, that kind of has this similar, you know, because I ultimately, I don't know if that should just be two lanes in that area the whole time. Or if it should be one lane with a middle lane that's for turning or what? I don't, I'm not a traffic person. But I think um, to address that one spot, it might make sense to kind of look at that whole piece and see if there's a way to to address. Those three intersections that are kind of, you know, back to back to back to each other.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Representative, uh, I'm glad you're here because it sounds like we're we're sending you home with some homework.
That's my job. I'm happy to do it.
And I'm co- I'm confident that Ms. Nelson will help you find the answers. Uh, she's a very impressive young lady.
She is. In fact, uh, I'm sure uh, all of you saw her assisting the public during town meeting. Uh, she was the uh, very con young woman assisting with the microphone covers there to to help mitigate the effects. Uh, I just would like real quick, Mr. Chair, if I could comment on Richmond Street and Main Street. So uh, it's something that uh, we had, we have spoken about. I spoke with Mr. Aluni. Um, and I think Paul may be able, I think it was Thursday or Friday last week, forgive me, the days sometimes blend together. And um, uh, it it, we were seeing perhaps if along that segment, we could expand it. Um, the the reason that I was focusing primarily on Clark was that potentially this would, the only thing that would we be required to. Post the proposed upgrade if we decide to go forward with the traffic study would be sandblasting and paint. Um, I don't mean to speak for Mr. Aluni, but I think what we would need at one twenty nine and thirty eight would probably be a lot more sizable construction. A bit more of an investment and we thought maybe depending on the size and scope of the intersection overhaul there. It might be wisest to wrap that up in a project which would extend from Burlington Ave to one twenty nine. And um, I do have some homework, Mr. Chair, to bring back to you. And amongst that, I would like to share with the select board as we're taking count now. We did a uh, a small survey at the local town meeting, politically active folks that took their time to come out. And one of the questions was. Of the remaining segment of Route thirty eight that has yet to be addressed in in Main Street. Uh, again, as you all know, we're currently redesigning Burlington Ave up. Which do you feel the priority is? Uh, my suspicion here, if I was a betting man, I think most people would say one twenty nine to Burlington Ave. Um, which is one of the answers. The other answer that they could have checked was one twenty nine to the Tuxbury Wilmington line. But uh, I think uh, again, it'll probably be one twenty nine and Rocco's up to up to Burlington. Um, the chaos there, you know, we've all spent time staying on that street corner. And I'm sure we can all recollect times where we heard the tires squeals and we all looked away anticipating hearing that accident. So. Um, it's been certainly on our radar and uh, I'm happy to approach DOT and see what we can do to fix it.
Well, great. We really appreciate any help you can give us. Uh, we, I think we've talked about a couple of uh, sore spots here in town that we're all very well aware of. So appreciate my colleagues pointing them out while we have you and uh, we we look forward to, you know, hopefully seeing some progress. I know you were able to help us out uh, with a young family uh, with a curb cut over by Rocco's. There's a uh, a young man with a with a handicap issue and you were kind enough to assist to make sure that that uh, young man can get around. So we really appreciate you doing that.
Please, and thank you for bringing that to my attention, Mr. Chair. I'm too humble sometimes and uh, I know why the family first approached you. So I appreciate all the work all of you are doing and uh, I hope you're all uh, safe and and healthy and your families are as well.
And uh, we want to give a shout out to Ms. Nelson. She's a junior in high school and she's already improving Route thirty eight. So I think we can all agree that we're very grateful that she's on board helping us out.
Thank you so much. Sorry I've been quiet this whole time. I didn't want to interrupt anybody.
No, I think you've uh, said all the right things here tonight, Ms. Nelson.
All right. Thank you. I'm so grateful to be on this call.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome.
Hey, thank you, guys. Take care of yourselves. All right. Uh, moving on to our final appointment of the evening, we have the annual reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. So for those of you at home who are not familiar, uh, every year um, after the election and after the town meeting. A board will reorganize their leadership and so it has been uh, quite a long year, fourteen months to be exact, not that I've been counting. Uh, but it is time for us to reorganize as we move forward with the rest of this calendar year. So uh, if you don't mind, I just want to say, uh, really appreciate everybody's support over the last fourteen months. I've been uh, very privileged to be your chair. Uh, it's been a team effort. I really appreciate everybody on the board and all the uh, town employees have been very, very impressed. Uh, working very closely. One of the things you realize very fast uh, is that you have a lot to learn when you become chair. And I've been just so thoroughly impressed with everybody's willingness to help and it's truly been a team effort. So I really appreciate everyone's assisting me over the last fourteen months. With that, uh, if you don't mind, my colleagues uh, would allow me my final act as chair. I'd like to make a nomination if that's okay with all of you. Uh, and and certainly we can discuss it uh, shortly, but I'd like to nominate uh, Mr. Eaton to be our chairman uh, for the coming year. And so with that, I'm happy to open up the discussion.
Mr. Bendel, I'd uh, second that nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Is there any uh, other nominations or discussion?
I just wanted to take a minute to thank you, uh, Greg, for my first year kind of in this role. You've been a wonderful chair. Um, I don't think anyone could have anticipated since March, the amount of work that being a chair would really require. It's a, it's an extraordinary amount of work to begin with and and like regular times. Um, but the fact that you've been on, you know, countless numbers of phone calls and press conferences and and meetings, um, dealing with this pandemic. It's, it's been amazing uh, that you've, you've been able to do it and this is a vol- you you know, this is a volunteer job for all of us. And the fact that you sacrificed so much of your time while dealing, you know, with your own kind of having to work remotely and your family being home. And uh, we just, I I really appreciate all the work that you've put in to these last months. Um, all the the ways that you've tried to keep us in the loop um, when things are changing minute by minute. And um, I just, I really appreciate all that you've done to kind of make my first year on the board. Um, the year that that it was and I I'm glad uh, that you've put Selectman Eaton up there. I'll say on behalf of Bev, hopefully he speaks up a little bit more. I won't be sitting next to him probably for a while to point it out, but I think it's a great choice. Um, and I I look forward to the year ahead.
Thank you. I really appreciate those comments. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Bendel.
Please, Mr. De Palma.
Uh, being the new kid on the block, so to speak, now, you gave me a great crash course. And I do appreciate it and I will always be in your debt for the way you advised me through my first meeting and showing me how uh. What I have to do and I just want you to know, I appreciate everything you did for me at the beginning and I'll always be in your debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Bendel, I I was actually gonna wait uh, under announcements, but since uh, Selectman Omahoney started the ball. And I agree with the the comments from my colleagues.
I may rule you out of order while I still can.
Yeah. Listen, I can't imagine uh, what you've gone through since uh, March. I can imagine what you've gone through since last April. Uh, but since March, day to day, I mean, we've, we've had uh, plenty of conversations. Uh, and um, you know, you're on the phone with uh, town manager, Howl, it seems like every day, isn't that right, Jeff? Sometimes uh, good and sometimes not so good, but uh, you're on top of everything that that happens and I appreciate that uh, very much. Uh, and I thank you for that and the residents should be proud of the fact that you're chairman for the fourteen months. And and uh, all that you've done for them and for us. Uh, without question, this was something that that came out of the blue and and you handled it with professionalism and class. And and I do uh, appreciate you being chairman for these last fourteen months. And in turn, I I don't think anybody else is gonna uh, put up a name for nomination and so I'm gonna. Take a crack in just in anticipating that Jonathan's gonna take over and congratulate him. Uh, for coming in uh, as our new chairperson and and I look forward to working with you. And and uh, certainly could not have picked a better person and that doesn't reflect on any of my colleagues. It's just that uh, I I know that Jonathan will pick up right from where you left off, Greg. Uh, you you studied the job well. Uh, you you know things inside and out and I'm sure Jonathan is the same way in watching him. Over the past couple of years and how he's handled himself uh, on the board. So uh, congratulations to both of you really uh, for what you do on behalf of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you, Mr. Kyra. And um, but I I do want to echo the comments that's uh, Mr. Omahoney, Mr. Kyra, Mr. De Palma. It's uh, you certainly stepped up to the challenge uh, and uh, I think I, it was leading up to town meeting. And I, you and I spoke and I, you said that every single department had a hand to play on making that town meeting happen. And uh, for the work that they put in, uh, for the work that Mr. Hall put in, for the work that you put in. Uh, and the time that you must have put in in coordinating that, uh. I think certainly you will be a difficult act to follow, but uh, you were an exceptional leader uh, in very difficult times. So uh, I know as a member of the board, I was grateful for your leadership and I think the town uh, as well has uh. This has been a constant changing situation. The last four months have been uh, waking up to new news every single day. So uh, my thanks to you. I mean, your job very well done, so.
I really appreciate that. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you all for a lot of those kind comments. Like I said, it's been a total team effort, which includes uh, you you folks and uh. All the, all the town employees. I want to compliment Jeff. Uh, it's been uh, really a pleasure to uh, to work with him so closely last year. And I have to uh, certainly thank my wife for her patience. So, okay.
One stipulation before uh, if you don't mind, that Mr. Eaton gets a generator for his house or if he does lose power like he usually does.
I did replace the car battery, so if I need to deal with meeting from the car, I uh, I can put that.
Your pay's gonna be doubled now.
Oh, good.
It was a fifty fifty chance he was gonna be in his car tonight, I heard.
It was, it was not a mass maybe. What's two times zero?
Well, well, as is, as is tradition, when the new chairman comes in, you're supposed to get up and switch seats. So are we gonna take a recess while Jonathan goes to your house, Greg, and you go to his house? You know, switch?
Full disclosure, I'm working shorts, so I'm not gonna stand up. Uh, okay. I think we've made up our mind. I don't want to speak for anybody, but uh, looks like we're ready for the vote.
Yes.
So uh, with that, we have a nomination of Mr. Eaton. It's been seconded by Mr. Kyra. There's been uh, healthy discussion and uh, with that, I'll be very pleased to uh, call for the vote and uh, starting with Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mrs. Omahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Bendel is a yes. It comes down to you, Jonathan.
It really doesn't. It really doesn't. I can do that, man. I'm a yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. Uh, Mr. Eaton, congratulations. I'm very pleased to turn the meeting over to you at this time and I look forward to your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. And again, thank you to all my colleagues for the vote of confidence. I look forward to the year to come and continuing to stay on top of what continues to be an evolving situation. Without throwing things out anymore, Mr. Hull, Communications.
Yes, under Communications, the first item is a memo that was sent to the board with regard to the Olin Superfund site. Basically outlines the the steps that are going forward. The, based upon conversations with representatives from EPA, they expect to issue their Record of Decision on August 10th. This Record of Decision essentially will describe the approach that they are looking to take with respect to Olin and the two other responsible parties in remediating the site and the site cleanup. The first important date out of that or from that decision will be an informational virtual hearing, which is scheduled for August 25th at 7:00 PM. EPA is going to be sending out information and actually they're in the process, as I understand it, of sending out postcards to the individuals that live within a a two mile radius of the site, but certainly will be continuing to provide information about the date. This first informational meeting is really a Q and A. They will initiate it with an overview of their plan, open it up for comments. And then once that is concluded, there's a 30 day comment clock that begins. Then on September 22nd of this year, there'll be a second virtual meeting. This will be a formal meeting in which they will receive comments. They will not be engaged in any Q and A. This will be an opportunity for people to make formal comments into the record. And then they've, Lynn Jennings, who is the chief, sector chief for EPA in our region, has indicated there's an opportunity to extend the comment period if any interested party is so inclined to do. And they are likely to grant that. So it's conceivable there could be a 60 day comment period. So that is what's unfolding. In the meantime, I've been in touch with Geo Insight, our consultant, Dan Deutsch, special counsel, a number of the department heads, Mike Woods, Shelley Newhouse, and other staff that we will begin to, as soon as the information comes out, take a look at it and begin to have comments prepared for that record. Next is a correspondence from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is with respect to Shawshank Tech. And they, Melanie Hagman, who's been the interim superintendent of schools there, took a similar approach to the one that we took, which was to pursue a 112 budget. I presume anticipating that their member communities would not be able to get their budgets approved by the end of the fiscal year. This correspondent simply seeks to confirm that their the request for the interim budget has been granted and they are allowed to spend $2,651,671 each month through fiscal '21 until the various district participants are able to get their budgets adopted or until December 20th, December 1st, whichever date comes first. Next is correspondence from Valerie Love, the Senior Vice President of Coca-Cola North America. This is a notice of facility closure. And this pertains to Edwala, which is a company that's been operating on Jewel Drive. And they tend Jewel Drive to be precise. They are looking to close the operations. My understanding that they produce a juice beverages. According to the letter, they've indicated that based upon their review of the operation and the competitive nature of this particular niche, they, Coca-Cola believes it's in their best interest to close the operation. There's 23 employees that work in that facility and they will be separated as of the end of August, August 31st. I did as a follow-up, reach out to the HR person from from Coca-Cola to advise her of this rapid response team, which is part of the Massachusetts Department of Labor operations. And they have the ability to assist employees with getting other employment. So I wanted to make sure they were aware of that, that tool. Next under correspondence is a, just a letter of thanks, Don Romano, the president of the Sons of Italy. As you recall, this was a month or so ago, the Sons of Italy reached out to all the departments townwide essentially and offered to provide lunches for the various town departments in gratitude for the work that all of our employees have been doing. And I just wanted to extend our appreciation for their recognition. I think it was it was just a nice, a nice thing to do. We have correspondences via an email from Dan Gibbons, who had been appointed to the Economic Development Committee, just noting that given his various commitments, he is no longer able to serve on the Wilmington Economic Development Committee and is stepping down. We also have just the notice of reappointments, in this case, to the Finance Committee. We have John Doherty, Teresa Meganelli, and Jonathan Dugus, who have been serving, as you will recall, on the committee. And they have been reappointed to three-year terms, which will expire in 2023. And then finally, there's correspondence here from Verizon with regard to their cable programming. And they note that they will be sending out notices to their subscribers on or after August 1st advising them that their cable rates will be increasing anywhere from $3 to $9 per month, depending upon the cable packages that they are signed up for.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. And board to consider?
Under board to consider, so the the appointment for the representative to fill Daniel Gibbons' spot, that, that appointment was actually, or that name was brought forward by Selectman Kyra. And he has brought forward a new name, Paul Tivnan, to serve on the Economic Development Committee and that name is before the board for your consideration this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to place the name of Paul Tivnan to serve on the Economic Development Committee. First, let me thank Dan Gibbons for the time that he put in when the committee had just first started. I know that Dan's business True Value Down at the Market Basket is is doing well. And I'm sure he, you know, does, just didn't have the time and the commitment to, to put it into the committee at this time. I, I know he's a an avid volunteer throughout the town. I remember coaching Little League with Dan. Just a great businessman and I appreciate him taking, accepting that appointment. And I thank him for the work that he did on the Economic Development Committee. With that, Paul Tivnan is employed at State Street Bank as a business analyst. And I believe he's working primarily remotely from, from home, but his office is out of Quincy, Mass. Paul, too, is like so many individuals in Wilmington, is a volunteer, an avid volunteer. He, he served many years on the Band Parents and he's on the Finance Committee at St. Thomas. And he's a member of the Wilmington Sons of Italy. And I think Paul will be a great addition to the Economic Development Committee, taking the place of Dan. So I look forward to a positive endorsement of Paul.
How do I put that to the emotion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kyra, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second for discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I second that motion and I just want to add that I too appreciate the service of Dan Gibbons. It's been a pleasure to serve with him on the Economic Development Committee for the past year. A very, very smart businessman, very loyal to his community. Runs a very successful business and we really appreciate his service. And I look forward to serving with Paul in the coming year.
Mr. Palmer, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did. I wanted to know when we were first notified that these appointments are gonna be, and reappointments are gonna be coming up. This is the first I've heard of it. I have no objections with any of them, but I was just curious.
Are you speaking on the Finance Committee or the?
Yes, Finance Committee.
Those, I believe, expire at the expiration of the fiscal year, if not the end of town meeting.
Okay.
That's right, Mr. Chair. So the Finance Committee appointments, those that are coming up for reappointment or expiration, that takes place following town meeting. So after the 27th, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, chairman of the Finance Committee and the town moderator, they are the appointing committee as identified in the bylaws. And they are the ones that get together to make the appointments or reappointments.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Kyra and a second by Mr. Bendel. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, we will call for the vote. Mr. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney?
Yes.
And I am a yes, you know. Thank you, Mr. Tivnan, for your volunteer.
Next under board to consider is the approval of the renewal of a secondhand dealer's license for GameStop. The, the application has been completed. There was a bit of a delay in part, given the COVID situation, but the application was presented to us and it has been reviewed by the police chief, the fire chief, the building inspector and the treasurer. And they all have no issues with respect to approval of this this license.
So you want to make a motion?
Lord McQuarrie makes a motion to approve the renewal application for GameStop.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Kyra, a second for Mr. Bendel. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney?
Yes.
And I am a yes, you know.
And next under board to consider is a, an email that I received from a representative from the India Association of Greater Boston. This organization is, has historically had their event to commemorate the independence of India as a country, which is August 15th. Each year, they've done it in Boston at various locations, down on the Charles, over at City Hall Plaza. But obviously with the current situation with COVID and the challenges of being able to meet in a group setting, apparently they have opted to requests from communities in the Boston area, the ability to gather in small group and raise the flag of India in a brief ceremony. As I understand it, it would not last any longer than a half an hour. Offer some brief comments. They also, they're also inviting members of the board to attend. They were specifically requesting the use of the town common for purposes of raising the flag. I had some conversations, communications with Lou Semaglia about this. And as he rightly notes, that particular location, given the monument and so on, is, is really not the the appropriate place for that type of activity. So it's my recommendation that the town hall, we have, as you know, the flag flies here as well, that the ceremony be permitted here. You'll recall in the past, the organ donor organization, local resident, Mr. Murphy, has come to the town on several occasions and we, the board has authorized the flying of the donor flag at that location. And so my recommendation would be that the board consider authorizing this to take place on instead of Saturday the 15th, Friday the 14th of August.
Mr. Semaglia is on the phone. I'll put him the opportunity to speak to us if he wishes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I appreciate the town manager giving me the opportunity and asking me about that. But we, we have talked about it. We considered that no flag should fly over our War Memorial except for, of course, the American flag and the POW flag. And the Purple Heart flag has also flown over. But we didn't feel like it was appropriate to, to have that flag flying over our War Memorial.
Thank you, Mrs. Semaglia.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to fly the India flag on Friday, August 14th at the Town Hall and allow for a small ceremony as outlined in the email.
Second.
For discussion. Mr. Hull, did you say the 15th or the 14th?
They've requested the 15th or the 14th. My recommendation is the 14th being a Friday would be more. We would have people here.
Other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Selectman Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We call it unanimous.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
All right, next up is public comments. Do you have any callers, Mr. Chairman?
We do have a caller on the line. I just want to reiterate, if a caller wants to make a comment, they can hit star nine on their keypad to, to raise a virtual hands. That will notify us that you wish to speak.
Thank you, host, for unmuting me. If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to congratulate Greg. It was all said before, but it's, it's a thankless job at times, especially over the last, obviously, four or five months now. You've been able to steer the ship in the right direction with the the help of the Town Hall, obviously, and Jeff and all the department heads over there. And Jonathan, good luck.
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Semaglia. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Lou. Hey, Lou, we learn from the best.
Mr. O'Neill, has anyone indicated that they wish to speak?
They have not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're gonna hold on for another minute or so just to make sure anybody might have the opportunity to call in.
While we're holding on, can I ask Mr. Hull a question? Real quick question.
If you want to hold on, we've got announcements and new business next.
Okay.
We do have resonant wishes to speak again. Mr. Semaglia?
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was, Mr. Shampoo has been trying to get on. He just wanted to pass along his congratulations and thank yous to Greg and Jonathan. So I'm not sure if he's online or not, but he, he wanted to express his love for the job that you guys are doing. Luckily, I could put it as Mr. Shampoo would, but definitely not as articulate.
Mr. Semaglia, please give Mr. Shampoo a call and let him know how to use the telephone or the computer.
Lou, we'll have people call you and then you can call in. Lou, we'll have people call you, and then you can call in.
Evidently, that's the way it's going to work.
Yeah.
And kudos to Jonathan. We're on Zoom meetings, too, with department heads all throughout the town meetings, and he's done a heck of a job.
Right. Not taking this meeting from my car today, so so far, so good. Mr. O'Neill, is there anybody else besides Mr. Semaglia who wants to call?
There is not, Mr. Chair, unless he wants to speak for a third time.
I'm going to cut it off here, Lou. Now we're going to go to announcements. Mr. Bendel?
Yeah, tough act to follow, Mrs. Semaglia, but just thanks to everybody for all their hard work in preparing for town meeting. Thanks to, to the nearly 300 who came out and anticipated, and I thought it was a great success. Some articles passed, some articles failed, but it was great, healthy, and civil debate, and I can be proud of the way it turned out. Everybody was a very safe event. Again, my hat's off to everybody at Town Hall and all the departments who helped prepare, so thank you very much.
Kyra?
Yeah, I would echo Selectman Bendel's comments. The town meeting was a great success. Due to the immense planning, you know, from town manager to the town moderator to the chairman of the ward, right on through fire police, Mr. O'Neill, who's on the, who puts these Zoom meetings together for us. Outstanding job. DPW and, and the buildings for what they did, just great. Um, let me, new business announcement. Let me bring this up now. I noticed that the, in our packet, we always get different flyers and things of what different groups are doing in town, and one is the Bazelle Buzz, which is a newsletter from the Senior Center, and and I note in here that there was a young man, David Wooltag, who put a new bocce court over there at the Senior Center. It was beautiful. The one disappointment I do have is that there's no recognition of the $40,000 worth of renovations that were done over the Senior Center and largely due to the efforts of the Judge Hooper in the, in the Building Department. Yeoman's work, what they did, it transformed the inside of that building to look brand new, and, and I hope that in the August newsletter, if there, if there's going to be one, that they have pitches and a big thank you to the town workers for, for doing what they did there. And lastly, I want to take the liberty to wish my mother a 95th year. She's 95 years young on July 26th. And I'm taking that liberty to wish her that, because this is our only July meeting, and I know she's watching, she watches every Selectman's meeting, and so happy birthday, Mom. Thank you, Mr. Eaton.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I want to congratulate you, Jonathan. I wish you the best of luck in your new position. I hope with the extra money, you'll be able to get more power into your home. I want to compliment Greg. He, he has been a trooper through this whole COVID. It's every time I see him, he's on the run on the phone, or going crazy over it. And for him to handle it the way he did, just, I want, I want to applaud you. Again, congratulations for what you did for the town of Wilmington. I know there's a lot of people involved in it, but we're talking about you right now, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Omaha?
Yes, I have just, I guess, kind of a request. As we kind of saw with the Economic Development Committee needing to make some adjustments today, I would like to ask you, Mr. Chair, I guess, to put this on a future agenda for us to review some of the other committees. For example, the Inhabitant Bylaws Committee, I had, I had asked for Mr. DePomo to be appointed as a resident. He's now on the board. And Mr. McCoy, I believe, remains on as the Board of Selectmen's representative. So I don't, I feel like this might be a good opportunity, since we're kind of reorganizing for the next year, for us to maybe evaluate the committees and see what the plan is going forward and, and who's on it and who should be on it, and if other people are needed to be involved or if shifts are needed.
Just for myself, I wanted to congratulate and thank all of the members of the Town Hall and the other departments that put work into preparing for a safe town meeting. I think that was a very significant lift on everyone's parts, and it's greatly appreciated, not the ideal circumstances, but certainly a job well done. I am getting the message that there was some difficulty in, I guess, indicating that the caller is willing to speak, so, Mr. O'Neill, if you want to let the caller in, we will do a one-time exception to let individuals speak.
Hi, good afternoon, or good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Frank West, Two Birchwood Road, Wilmington. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. West.
Okay. Apologize, I've been trying to get in during the public comments section, and for whatever reason, it wasn't going through, so I probably appreciate you allowing me this opportunity. Just have three quick comments. One, wanted to applaud everybody that went to town meeting, everyone that put it together. I mean, it was kind of a very unique situation, and I think it worked well, so kudos to everybody that was involved in getting that set up and making sure that it ran as successfully as it did through the Town Moderator. Two comments. One, I'm wondering if the town could look at the Congregational Church, more specifically, the clock, which is what I believe is owned by the town of Wilmington. Can that be fixed? Because right now, all three faces show different times. So I don't know if anyone's looked at that. I know when I was on the board, we had a problem, and I went to then-town manager Kyra, and it was fixed. So I don't know if anyone's looked at it, or if anyone from the Congregational Churches brought that to anybody's attention. And second thing, the, I've asked over the last couple of years, during, especially right after town meeting, to look at the Roman House. I mean, interestingly, Mr. Kyra, Mr. Kyra mentioned that there was $40,000 recently put into the Senior Center to make it a more modern, more inviting place for our seniors. It'd be nice to do something similar at the Roman House if we could, you know, spend some money fixing it up. I mean, who knows what the future of the building is, but you know, if we could make it look nicer, maybe give it a paint job, have, I know I've asked in the past to maybe have George Hooper give some sort of an assessment of the of what it would take just to, you know, make it look a little nicer. So I'd like to hear some comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. With regards to the expenses at the Senior Center, I believe $30,000 of that was from the state, and the town paid the remaining $10,000. I, I think we'll have to get back to you on the clock issue. All right. Mr. O'Neill, are there any other callers?
There is not, Mr. Chair.
All right, new business. Mr. Bendel?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kyra?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Mr. DePomo?
Nothing here.
Ms. Omaha, honing in or done?
Ben again would like the fireworks to stop, please. Stop, before the July is over, people.
All right. Important dates, Mr. Hall?
Important dates, we have now through October 11th, the drive-through Farmer's Market, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:00 AM to 11:30. Pre-order required. You can go to WilmingtonFarmersMarket.com. August 5th is a brush drop-off on Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. August 8th is another brush drop-off, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Next Board of Selectmen's meeting is the 17th of August. Town Hall, well, virtual, 7:00 PM. And then again, the August 25th is the EPA's informal public information meeting that will be virtual, beginning at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Seeing no items on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Back in.
Motion by Mr. DePomo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bendel. We'll call Mr. Bendel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. DePomo?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Omaha?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And I am a yes. Good night, everybody. Stay healthy.